I'll make the motion to uh propose doing number four and start the communication in the summer first.
No.
No.
No. Start communication.
September.
In September with implementation December.
And it's not a proposal, it's an approval, approval of item number four.
Yep.
Uh starting communication in September implementing December.
That's okay, all right, I have a motion in the second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of us saying. All right, very good, thank you Jerry, I think that is, yeah. You were back to seven, right, if I'm following is correct?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, so seven is discussion and possible action, village donation to twenty twenty-three trout days event.
It's the same thing, great, paying five hundred dollars for. Porta bodies. Like that over last year.
I, I, I don't know, I know exactly where they're spending the money, but you're correct, we did spend it. We did donate five hundred dollars money.
Yeah, last year their proposal was for the body.
Yeah, did we get a proposal this year?
I thought I saw.
A proposal.
I did.
They had just reached out by email asking to see if the board would be willing to do the same. Monetary donation for the same purpose as last.
Oh, they said same purpose?
Yeah, same purpose.
It was in your, I didn't see.
Just, just my memo.
Yeah, in your memo.
Do we just wanna add this to the budget every year they don't come back or something we want them to ask for?
Well, although if the new village hall would have restroom facilities that they can use, that was kind of the idea.
I'd also like to do anything, all to do for the chamber or whatever.
That's some lot of money every year for the events.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure, I mean, we were kind of, weren't we supposed to be looking at how we wanna handle events? Did we, we didn't actually totally resolve that, did we?
No, we're still collecting data.
Those, and those discussions were, well, I guess it is related.
Yeah.
That was, that was on the, the fees for the thing, not donations.
But it would be kind of all tied together, I mean, we're giving the Lions five hundred bars, what about other? Events that happened, so I know we were, that's right, we were using this spring to see how much was in, right?
Yes, because we had talked about it after our events.
I, I, I think, I, I don't have a problem with approving this, but I guess I'm not. I would not be in favor of putting it into the budget yet, because I think we need to have. A discussion on how we're gonna do this, so it's fairly across. The board, you know, you know, the Boy Scouts do something, are we gonna give that, so we have to come up with something. So I'd rather just keep it like this now.
With the grant process, but and you can apply.
Maybe, that's one of the, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ideas we could talk about, I think that's a good idea. So do I have a motion for the um, the five hundred donation? Uh, to the Lions Club for twenty twenty-three trout days?
Isn't it actually the? Trout Days coordinators, because I think there it's a collaboration between the Chamber and the Lions Club, so.
Look, but it does, the, does the, doesn't the Lions handle the money part, or does the Chambers handle?
I think we said the other Trout Days. Festival coordinators.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we donate five hundred dollars to the Trout Days Festival coordinators for the Trout Days Festival.
I'll second. All right, I have a motion in the second, any discussion? Michael.
I initially, when I read this, had a little reservations. Just because recently the Chamber of Commerce came to us and told us that. Last year they took money in their budget that they were able to donate fifteen hundred dollars to the Lions Club in support of their pavilion. And they also were thinking about starting a scholarship. That they were gonna give away. It sounds to me like this is an organization that isn't really scraping the rock bottom for funding, yet they're coming to us for this funding anyway, just to see if we will donate to them.
I see, okay, I got it, Stan, I, I, okay, are you finished, otherwise I don't wanna interrupt.
No, that's fine, and. Just in terms of with us dealing with possible raises to staff and other things, we have to be concerned with how we're spending our money, and I just heard somebody talking about a grant proposal. We aren't an entity that should be giving away grants, we're working for the taxpayers. We're trying to keep taxes down, we have to decide. If we're gonna benevolently give away taxpayer funding to other organizations, that's the point I wanted to.
All right, I got Cameron, Cody, and myself.
I think the whole, this, this has been an ongoing discussion, right, it's just how do we do these fairly? Right, and, and we had talked about almost a year ago, like, we shouldn't donate anything, we talked about. You know, but then, you know, that would be bad, so, or, I, I, I don't know, I, 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 I agree with you, it does feel kind of weird. That we donate to all of these right now, I would like to get to a place where we have some sort of consistent thing we do, whether that's. Something, you know, a fund you can apply for, or if it's we just are saying no to everyone from here on out, or whatever, I don't know what the fair consistent thing is, but. Let's wait until after we get the data from the spring to determine that. So it would be unfair to say no to this group right now. Because we've already said yes this year to other people, I believe.
We do, no, I think.
Or maybe not.
I don't think so, maybe this year.
Okay, so my, I appreciate absolutely where you're coming from, but as a village, they're coming, people are coming here to, for this event, right? And we're responsible for infrastructure. Then we do not have public facilities, that's why I'm okay with the five hundred dollars going towards restrooms. If they were asking us to buy five hundred dollars with the rocks, it'd be a hard pass, but it's restrooms, infrastructure. That's why I'm okay with the five hundred dollars to this event. For providing sanitary services. In the event Village Hall has, is built and we have those new restrooms that are available. Then I'm probably gonna say no. They're using a public park without bathroom facilities, I feel the village should be able to provide those.
And I, and I, I'm gonna kind of go, I, I hear what you're saying, and I agree to it, but I don't think. I'm voting to give them five hundred dollars because I think they're strapped with. For funds, I'm doing it because this is a village-wide. Tourism event, so I'm putting under economic development. For infrastructure, the same thing, porta bodies make sense, we're bringing people in to do garage sales, do the wine walk. Do all these bands, we have a lot of events that we're expecting people to come in, when we do that, I think government have the responsibility. Provide some of the infrastructure to make this happen, I don't think it should fall on all the businesses to have public toilets, for example. Uh, so. I, I'm with Cody on that, and I look at it just a little different, that I see it as economic development, this is our effort to help with that. Because it's bringing in people to the community.
I am a hundred percent with you, though, on being a steward for tax.
Oh, absolutely.
In this particular event. There it is. Nature.
Hey Doug.
I also think last year they were not very long, though, it's expanded. And I do, you know, it's one of the reasons for the new facility and police station, that makes it a good fit, a good idea. Um, I also, you know, wanna support it. In a right way, I think this is the right way, I do think we need to figure out the chamber piece, it would be nice to have better partnerships, all these things are about. Kind of haphazard, and I think that even if it's the Chambers annual. You know, part of one project, I think there is an annual part there, it's all kind of whatever. This is more there, once you have it really built and a better infrastructure, a better facilities.
Any other discussion? All right, uh, let's do a roll call, please.
Let's be broken. Yeah, let's be worker, yes, let's be ready.
Yes.
Let's be runner.
Yes.
Let's be go later, let's be.
Yes.
Doesn't like that.
Yes. All right, uh, number eight, discussion and possible action, or a decree light policy.
I, I think, did we miss?
Did I miss something?
Hmm. Well, okay. We, the library staffing shortage memo, I guess maybe that's just, it was part of six.
Yeah, I think it was part of six, okay, I'm sorry. No, you're right, uh, just, uh, this is something that I wrote up after. Some of you know that Michael's done most of the heavy lifting on this topic, and what it is, is. Um, we had a difference of opinion with MG&E on who owned what streetlights. Um. And the reason that's important is, one, the number of count. We corrected. Uh, we were paying for more streetlights than we had, and they did credit us back with eleven thousand dollars. So that was good, uh, the second part was, we felt we owned a number of the. Uh, streetlights, and that made a difference because you pay, if we own them, we pay less to MG&E than if they own them. So we've been meeting with them, and just to show you, you can hardly see it all passing around, but this is the map, and where. Became debates are the ones when you see a yellow dot and a green dot. And this is MG&E's record, their record, uh, the yellow dot means we own the pole. And the green dot means they own the light fixture. I can tell you from being on the board, when some of these went through, we believed we own both. Unfortunately, the wording in um, the documents for one, the developer agreement. Two, when we energized, the light pole wasn't very clear on ownership. They ended up coming to showing us they had invoices that showed that they paid for it. So we think what happened was we purchased on behalf of the developer. Light holds from the city of Madison, because we wanted cement ones. MG&E was putting up fire glass, so I think their data people made. Us the owner of the light, but they had invoices where they purchased. The, the fixtures, which meant that there was, there's, I think, it's one of those things where. People interpret things differently, uh, it was our belief that. Uh, we didn't have a good case to prove that the lights that are yellow-green were ours, the red ones are ours, and you can see. The developments after twenty seventeen, it's really clear in the developer agreement. So that's the backstory to it, so what I wanna make sure is that this doesn't happen again, that. Four members have to spend an incredible amount of time following this, so what this policy does. It makes it very clear. On what we do, so there's no question at all on the ownership. And the number of poles, so in a new development, when we energize, ask MG&E to energize, we will tell them. The date we're doing it, we want it, the number of poles. And that we own it, and the developer agreements, we'll be very clear that they have to purchase them. And then turn them over to us, because what they were doing was they were purchasing the light poles, but then having MG&E. Pick up the cost of. The fixtures, and then basically saying that they covered everything, so we assumed they were all ours, MG&E. Was saying there's no money in the poles, you have poles you can have, but, so we, we've kind of cleaned that up. Uh, the second one is, uh, we had a little bit of discussion when a pole gets. Damage, it's pretty clear to me if it's an MG&E pole, they are going to pay for it, if it's ours, then we do. So this just sets um, kind of the standard and a policy that. Uh, with this, we should not run into this problem in the future. Cameron.
Did I, I, I think I missed something that it said, uh, is it more beneficial for us to own the pole, or, okay? Um, I, I see in the streetlight replacement section here. Um, so I mean, step two, decide ownership will change.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, how will that be done? Like, we, because we can't just take them from MG&E, right?
No, we can't, but if. We have cases where a pole gets knocked down, they put a new one in and then they bill us. If they bill us for that new pole, and we pay out a taxpayer money, we are gonna say that that's ours.
Right, okay. Okay, so there's no. There's no way to kind of like. Does it mean that, that graph, or that map was really messy, is there's no way like blanket be like, hey, MG&E, can we come with agreement, we'll, we'll just take ownership of everything?
Whoa, that would be expensive, that's what, three hundred? So, oh, oh, two hundred, we'd have to buy two hundred and fifty.
What I mean.
Light fixtures out of all four.
But, okay, let's say, I mean, I understand it'll be over time, but the ideal. Probably state of the replacement then would be. For every number two, we would take ownership of it, no?
We would try, I don't think we, I, I don't, if MG&E. If a tornado comes through, knocks down some light bulb, MG&E puts them up and stuff, I don't think we can claim ownership.
Okay.
I, I, I'm fortunate they own it, and the only way they can do it is if they, I mean, we could ask them if they wanna start slowly selling us their light poles.
That, that was what I was putting out.
I, I think that would be, I, I, I can't speak for them, but it's, it's a huge advantage, and almost every city now. Is going, and they admit it, going to our ownership, and we, if you look at that map, I, I would have swore, like, your. Subdivision, Lockenburg, I would have swore those were ours.
Why is Main Street?
Well, ours was.
Because uh. When you, when we own it, the rate of the maintenance is probably what, one-fourth of it when they own it?
Basically. If they own. The fixture, I think they wanna own the pole, but if it's a fixture that they charge, the facilities charge under the month, it's kind of like renting your old telephones. So basically. That LED fixture, they're gonna be charged at a higher rate than your amber high pressure sodium ones, which are, and other ones are being discontinued. Though, and there's about a five dollar difference between the two. So if MG&E goes and replaces an older light that they own with an LED light, you're gonna see savings in the energy cost. But you're gonna be paying a higher facilities charge, and mostly with the lights that started to work out, our bill's gonna go up, even if they put up an LED fixture.
Okay.
The energy savings does not. Invert the increased facilities costs. Why is Main Street?
Because those, we, we totally own everything, and we don't have a contract, so we, we'll.
I was just curious.
Yeah, that, we put up. Our own stuff there, and took total ownership of it, we don't pay MG&E for anything like that, and if they go wrong. We either hire MG&E or another electric company.
Where, where are they? By my house?
Is, the light has been saved.
They would move the one all the way up at the top of the, do they put it back in there?
Because I thought we removed that one.
Yeah, I went up there and looked, the one up to the, closest to the gate all the way to the top.
Did they take it down?
That was gone.
That would be, they did it when they were struggling. We certainly own the pole, that's why they wouldn't.
Yeah, we sent the letter to all the neighbors, and they said they didn't, they didn't care if it was gone.
I think, I think I drove up there and looked.
I said I was okay as long as something replaced it.
That one, I think.
It's gone now, but, I'm gonna go home, and if it's still here.
Well, well, then that's okay, we're not being charged for it, so that's a good thing. But I thought we had made that call, uh, to get rid of that one. All right, any other comments on the policy here? Do I have a motion to accept the policy? Streetlight policy.
I'll make a motion to accept the village. Streetlight policy, uh, the village ownership, the, the village streetlight ownership policy.
I'll second. All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of us saying so moved. All right, number nine, discussion transparency in local government, I put this on the agenda. Because it is now kind of the. Favorite word of, uh. Of usage when people talk about businesses, bosses, and it's generally in the negative of the lack of transparency. And it's been used in this uh, meeting a number of times, and I know in uh, at least the committees I've been, so. I think when, since that's world, word is out there, I'd like to go around and see. What people's definition of transparency, and what benchmarks you use. To see if there's a lack of transparency, or there's good transparency, so. By the end of this discussion, I'd like us, us to have an understanding of what that means. So when someone says they didn't feel there was transparency on this, there would be some benchmarks that we would know. On why that is, and when we present things, we would try to hit those benchmarks. Make sure everybody is comfortable with, with the information, so. We'll start with Cody, definition of transparency and.
You can see through it, glasses transparent.
As related to.
Right.
The media, okay.
And I. I think the word transparency is getting thrown around a lot on social media about. We're having some sort of closed-door sessions, voting on dog parks and new village halls, and frivolously spending money. And I think more often times than not, it's just rumors that are spread on social media. Um, and, I, everyone says what's going on, I tell them. There's chairs, come to a village board meeting, go on the village website, look at our minutes, look at, look through the documents, it's the same things that I get. Outside of a closed session. I think it's just more of a buzzword for people that wanna be triggered by things that maybe aren't going to their liking. By saying that we're not being transparent as a village board. People ask me a question related to the village board, I will inform them with best of my knowledge, with best of my abilities, and try and send them to places where. Like the village website, where they can see the same stuff that we're all looking at here. It's, I mean. I used to think that there was some hidden door stuff, I joined the village board, and I see there's no hidden doors, there's nothing. We're not running around trying to build a pool in the middle of the night. So, I don't, I don't know where. People are getting so bent out of shape about it, it's, it's due process that we're following it. Sorry for that, Earl.
No, that's all right, that's exactly what we want here. There I, you know, I'm like.
So I, no, I think, I guess I think a lot about that in the past, I feel like. People have just wanted people to trust them, and I think that's where I see the transparency pieces, I'm not going to just trust someone, I want to know. What the process is, and I want it to be clearly communicated. So. I think. I don't, I mean, I've seen things that come up on the um, board agendas, where I'm kind of shocked where it's come from, I mean. You know, I was on Parks and Rec, so I guess I was kind of surprised when the multi-use. Recreation center came up, and we then never discussed it, it'd never been brought to Parks and Rec, so it's just, I guess. Um, not being surprised by items, or, and, and again. E- especially. I haven't lived here my whole life, I don't know everyone, so I don't, don't have that bubble of trust, so. I think just, as much as we can be clear about the process that we're going through, and communicating it, and not making quick decisions.
Right. Doug, I think transparency is just an availability. Of the agendas, the info, and like our financial records being right with your balance. I do think that as a. You know, so some of the rest of the taxpayers should be engaged in things, lots of people, so. I'm always, you know, disappointed, and I share my frustration a little bit, it seems that the only thing to fire people up is in their accounts. And we're going to find ways to, you know, positive, and engage more people in our processes. Uh, we had a hundred-year birthday during the pandemic. Uh, we never celebrated it because of pandemic, but now they believe that mother, new new school building, or some other big period, and we start to do an annual meeting where. We can just break forever, have a drink, or whatever, and get updates. And I think the more familiar we are with the way. Village works. The trust there is.
Right, okay, Cameron?
I guess in my year on the board. Um. It's not with every single item, but with certain things. Um, you know, it's kind of like, I'll see. You know, maybe something will come to the board, or planning committee, or something like that, and then we'll, I'll kind of, you know, the head will pop up of the project in the water. And then three, four, or five months go by, and then all of a sudden it comes up again, that, you know, like somewhat agenda or whatever, but like, things are very different. And I didn't know how we got from A to B, and then I'm being asked to make a decision on B. But I don't have any of the background, and kind of Sarah's point, it then came as a surprise, like, like I didn't. Know we had working on it, because there was kind of nothing happening there. Um, so, I, I, I mean, I don't have a definition of transparency per se. But it is. Weird when larger, bigger projects that happen over a long period of time. Only surface once every few months. But like, a lot happens between them, and then I just don't feel like I can be an effective. Um. Uh, you know, elected official, or the residents who are asking me to, you know, like, I, I wanna be informed when I'm making my decisions. And I feel like I'm missing a lot of context, or a lot of information, or a lot of steps, or pieces to the puzzle between A and the B. Um, I think the other thing. With transparency here is, it has happened multiple times in this meeting. Where we will talk about a topic. And usually a department head will say, wait, that's incorrect, wait, that wasn't how we talked about it, wait, that wasn't what we agreed upon. So I don't know if that's necessarily transparency, but it's, it's, it's another thing that then makes, you know, my. Uh, you may here as, as an elected official, I, I feel like I'm, I, you know, I, I don't have all of the information to make. The right decision if there was something department heads wanted me to know with that decision, but I, you know, I don't, you know. So, I, I don't know how to fix all of it, um, at least, at least, maybe this is me, maybe I'm just the person, maybe I'm just the one who's having these concerns and feeling like. There's pieces missing to the decisions I have to make. Um. You know, I, I don't know how to fix all, I'm kind of doing research and into the topic, and if I have any. Major revelations, I will come back to this group and recommend something, but um, a- as of now, that is just how I feel.
Yeah, Michael?
Thank you. Um. I don't know, I, I really don't know, I, I don't know what the. How to define transparency, I think we do a very good job, our agendas are posted, everything's in the packet. Sometimes it does feel like. There could be a little bit more communications, or like Cameron was talking about, Sarah was talking about, big things come up, or even how things happen. But that's just, some of that stuff is just staff doing their job, preparing things, and then they come out, and then they're presented, now that's where. If we want those. Pieces to become more available, then maybe we need to have updates on projects, and there isn't a. Action on it, it's just a discussion, tells what's going on, so it isn't, here's this big. Giant thing, or even just updates halfway through, like, that would be a good way to facilitate uh. Transparency. Um. I don't know, I think the village website does a pretty good job of, of doing it, you can go back and review meetings, the one thing I. Will say of all the meetings, Mike, you stopped posting your Parks and Rec meeting in video. Accent?
Is that making this hard to tell, or?
No, no, not at all, their data scheme, well, no. All the other people do, and that's the one area where. I'm not trying to make it personal, like, I just don't know why you stopped doing it. It is, or, or, all, all the other meetings are on there, where you can, where the meetings are now recorded on Zoom, and you can watch them. Now, that could be, somebody could argue that that cuts down the transparency of a committee, or that actually, or one committee. If you wanna go back and actually hear what happened at the meeting, then you can, and I've done it on numerous other things. It's just something that I noticed that it happened, it was happening, and then it wasn't, now whether or not we care about that transparency or not, something I did for a while, and then I just noticed it wasn't. Um, because of the logic, we go back and hear what was said. Here, um. And that's really it, and, yeah, I really, I really don't have a lot, this has to be what we're doing, and we have to be doing it well, and uh. Yeah, I don't know. It's have to make sure what we're doing, we're doing it well, people can see what we're doing, and what we put in packets are actually what happens. And what we've gone on is actually what's implemented, makes it in the ordinances, et cetera, so there aren't any pickups along the line.
All right, um, I, I guess I cheated, I went on the internet and. Put it in there and looked at it, a number of uh, definitions.
You're being transparent.
I'm being transparent, yeah, and here's. I'm being transparent, yeah, and here's the one that that I pulled out that I think. For me is what it means in this, in in this states, and again, I didn't write this, so I'm not taking credit for it. In a business or governance context, transparency refers to being open and honest and requires disclosure of all relevant information. So that others can make informed decisions, transparency implies openness, communications and accountability and is. Practice in companies, organization, administrations and communities, so it's a. And this hits it, so there's three parts, one, it covers everybody, it's not just us, it's admin, it's. Staff, it's the community, it's everybody, but what's important to me, it's relevant information. And to me, that means relevant information is all, the pros and cons of whatever the topic is. For decision making, there's a lot of work that goes in. To prepare for that decision. And that's where I think sometimes there's the, 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 the thought of the loss. Uh, transparency is that backstory work that's done. And again, my, I'm a little bit more, my boundaries are a little closer is, I think. Relevant information needs to be brought to everybody, so when you make the decision. All the aspects and all the information, how that gets collected. To me is not as important because I think it's cumbersome to be able to to keep everybody informed. So then I looked at what can local governments do to be more transparent. And the three that I pulled out here is through developing guidance for reports regularly and publicly reviewing reports. And creating a summary of reports that are extremely easy for citizens to access for free. The other one is through issuing guidance for improvement based on reviews of reports and doing so publicly. And with residents' involvement. Three, by developing promoting best practices within the local government. So, for the first two, I just, as an example, in finance, when finance does something. They usually have a report. Or a policy that they bring forward that is of neutral, written neutrally. And then they update it as things move through, what we're doing with the budget process. You see these things here, these are all done, we've been doing them since January, it allows everybody. Everybody here, every citizen to understand the different aspects. Of budgeting, and I think that to me is what I see as transparent. Bobby, working to get this information, to me, doesn't need to be how she got there. This is the pertinent relative information when it comes to this. And she's given us all the information, so later down the road. When we start talking about budget, we have all the information to it. So I think this is something, I kind of, I think we're all kind of thinking the same thing, the question is where. Where are the boundaries of it, where is it just? Doing the work to get to where the transparency is. Or how far do you go that needs, does the whole work? Product need to be transparent before you get there, and I think that's something we can. Uh, uh, think about a little bit, we don't have to come up with it tonight, but I certainly want to keep this open because. It is the buzzword right now and we need to have an understanding, so everybody's feeling comfortable with not only speaking. Uh, with the community, but also within here with our expectations of what we need to bring from committees. You know, we don't want committees just to bring us the stuff that acts what they want, we want to see the whole thing, right? We want to see the pros and cons of everything, so. Um, let's just keep, I don't want to spend too much more time, if anybody wants to comment now, that's fine, but I think. I would like to maybe bring this back up in June and maybe we'll have a little bit more time to. To develop this guidance that we can get, go ahead.
Really, there was something that really resonated recently about communicating. To the, I think like the stakeholders, like citizens, kind of the relevant information, because I do think sometimes. The formality of our agenda and the gender packets, I think that's part of why people aren't getting more involved because. They are overwhelmed and then to attack that hundred and ten page document is a lot, so we somehow. Better communicate, I think would get more involvement.
I agree, I think we need to pull things and. Find another avenue of like you say, making it easier. Easier, you know, we've gone.
Well, Peter is making it easier, because I shared some frustration with Mike with the long area attacks. Part of the statute, you know, part of the job we have to follow, but again, when you're looking to try to inspire and really message something. When you have to go to the one, this two hour order review, so I I think the key to make things easier and, you know. Bite size or whatever, you know, whatever it is, without with leaf collection, graphic, whatever it is.
Okay. Cameron.
Just, I, I think, I think most of what we, I mean, I guess. I'm thinking of transparency maybe in like two different things and it's weird because they're one and the same, but like. I think something for the public, like, you know, it took me like a year to really kind of figure out. How to like read through a packet, like it's not, if I just hand someone this PDF and say, like, what are we talking about, like? Well, I don't think they'd be able to answer that, so like, there's like the transparency for the public. I think it's exactly what Sarah and Doug just said, it's like, you know, some easy bite sized summary. But then, for us, like trying to make decisions, you know, again, not that we would hide information from the public, but we need more, like we. The seven of us in this room trying to make really important decisions can't just have like a little bite sized. Click notes of something and then make a decision off that, right, so we need. More information, I I have to say this, you know, again, most of what we do is really good, I love these, Jay, I've learned so much since January on on these. These budget and finance things, I really do appreciate those, um, you know, I think like the pool with the visioning um, committee and stuff, all of those are public meetings. And then the public visioning section, you're like. I haven't met someone who isn't kind of on some sort of level of kind of understanding how that's going, or if they're not, I can be like, go, go look over there, because there's a whole bunch of. Stuff specific to that, you know, even village hall, right, you know, we've been. Um, you know, it's come to the planning committee a few times, it's come to this group a few times. Um, hasn't come to this group in a while, so you know, it's again, I don't know if the project in rear its head at some point, and you know, they're like, ah, what happened, but. Overall, we do pretty well.
Yeah, but but I I again, I just want to, the the whole thing with city hall, I would disagree, we voted last. Week, last month, to form a CDA, for, and the only reason we're forming a CDA is for the village and police station. So we're not talking about the building, but we're still talking about the project, but. Right now, finance is the main part of it, so, you know, that's where I think. I mean, to me. Everybody should know that that was. The village hall police station, that's all we've been talking about for why we need a CDA and what that brings to us, so. You know, I I'm not, I guess sometimes I get a little confused on what would have been missing, because.
Well, I'll, I'll just clarify, because I I agree with you, I, I, you know, maybe, well, probably nothing, but like, you know, if I see the project here, you know, it could pop up. Ten feet forward and I was like, oh, you know, the building hasn't moved a lot because we've been talking about the CDA and finance stuff.
Yep.
But, you know, on the flip side, there's, you know, some sort of chance that, you know, all of a sudden it pops up five hundred yards over, and like, wait, when did we talk to, you know, and. I don't know, you know, I don't know what I don't know is the.
Well, that's the thing, but I I guess I would ask, for all fairness, when something comes up. Where you know, then that's the time to address and see if there's a reason. For that, because there are. In transparency and one of the other articles that I read on it, there are, there are things that. Keep you from being totally transparent, right, we can't do on closed session, and so there's a lot of things we talk about closed session, there's a reason for it. But we can't be transparent, uh. You know, state law requires certain things that we can't talk about in public or mention and that. So, you know, it's never going to be a hundred percent, but I would like, is I think it's important to. To see examples, when that head pops up, to say, hey. I kind of feel that I'm missing some transparency here, what happened from this point to this point, and then we can discuss that. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Instead of saying, okay, is it going to, worried about it popping up or something like that, that's, that's what I would just ask, then it'll make it easier. Us, for us to all understand what everybody wants, because we're all in charge of committees. And we kind of run them differently, but. As long as we all know what those benchmarks are, we should all try to hit them, so everybody's comfortable and feel. That they're getting the information they need to make a comfortable decision.
So sometimes I think there can be in a way too much transparency, because. Like someone said to Jay or Mike, well, what about a dog park at village hall? Now it's blowing up on Facebook that there's going to be a dog park at village hall. My understanding was there was just a brief conversation about it, but now people think it's going to happen. Then they read into it, for example, like Michael's project that he's done with his light bulbs. Couple of years ago when we started it, before I was on the village board. Someone told me, Michael wanted to eliminate all the streetlights in town, I'm like, what? I think, I know Michael's a little crazy about lights. But so then what I did is I went and I talked to him about it, so I sought out the source of the knowledge, and people are not willing to do their own homework to do that, like. You could post this whole meeting on Facebook and no one, and no one's going to care about it.
Well, okay, you're making a lot of assumptions, don't assume people don't care, but. You know, I mean, let's also know, people are very busy.
Right, and I understand, it's just, it's just one of those things where being a telephone is transparent.
But I think the point and I, there there's tons of examples where someone has an ideas, like sometimes, I'll have an idea, I I. Like the problem itself, so I'll have an idea, so I'll ask someone about this, well, then they talks, oh, Frank fell saying it, the next thing I'm, I don't do social media. The next thing I hear, we're doing this, this, and I'm thinking, well, that's crazy, I'm just inquiring. And trying to get information, so I can see if there's enough there to actually move it up to a decision making. And I think that's what, Cody, sometimes people jump on something. And they fill in the blanks, so it's better not to say it, until you get the information.
Very teacher, I, my have children, he's brother.
I'm one of the admins on the local Facebook page, and I had a couple of people message me about the dog park, about this. And I wanted to delete those comments and delete that thread, but we don't do that, the only thing we do delete is dog food posts. So, but it's like, I'm getting those messages, I see people like, there's dog park at Brewery Road, and I'm like, what? Not that I'm aware of, well, it says so on Facebook, Facebook isn't law, it isn't the rule, and a lot of people see stuff, hear stuff. And it gets blown way out of the portal.
And that's the counter part, go ahead.
I I don't, I still don't know how to do this, but like the bite size kind of easier summaries for residents to consume, because I think Sarah is right, everyone's busy, it's. It's hard, it's, I mean, I know we sit there and we go look at all the videos and figure out what people talk about in committees, because we have to, but it's very hard, well. It's never accessible for someone to like just figure out what I do on that, I don't know how to fix that.
Well, I I do believe and 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 I'm going to push probably a little bit harder that we do reports, because. You know, like this with the budget stuff, we could easily put just the budget stuff on the website, so people don't have to read a hundred and fifty pages. Every month to get to the, there are certain ones that I think we can identify that we think might be interest. Of it, and then put it on a separate one, so they don't have to go to the agenda, couldn't look up, huh? Yeah, Cliff Notes or even just attach this, but, you know, pull things out of our budget, tonight, there's been a number of things. That we could easily just pull that I think citizens, others they could care less about, paying the bill. I think the the brush thing will design something, so they'll get notified later, but there's a couple. There's a couple of things that we could just pull, boom, shoot it on there, and then that, I think we would get more people to look at it if they were shorter and it was. Simpler for them. But we have to be willing to take the time to put it in a format, either a report or a PowerPoint. You know, something or a summary, something that makes it easier.
Facebook posts, this is what the village board did, this is last week, and just not everything, but the, the important things.
I agree, those are the things that I think we can do, which I am hearing you and Doug talk about are the little bits. Instead of the whole hundred and forty pages, don't expect any, because no one's going to do that.
Like too long, don't worry.
Grab a few things that are there, throw them out there and citizens should easily be able to whip through them.
And at a minimum, if they have questions on those things, it would be good for them, you're like, oh, good, we're going to keep talking about it, and whatever, so come to meetings.
There you go. All right, we good on this one? Alrighty, we are at. Uh, discussion regarding state and accounting restrictions related to budgeting, Bobby, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, so, uh. This was their first January, like, they said we've been having, um. Little topics where we're um informing the board kind of the budget process or different terms. Um, so tonight we're talking about restrictions in the budget.
No, I think it's like.
So the first thing we're going to talk about, and we've talked about this before, but it's, uh. Something that statewide is concerning to a lot of municipalities against levy limit. So we're only allowed to tax our constituents. Um, so much, it sounds like we can, you know, not say, you're saying, oh, we're not going to borrow any money, instead we're just going to pay cash for everything, so we're gonna. You know, and the levy be ten million dollars instead of three million, you know, we're. Only allowed to raise it every year by our own authority now. Um, so I know Jay likes parks and grass and. So I tried to include a couple here, um, so going back, I have four years or five years of what. Um, our limit was and then what we actually levy, um, and as you can see. The gap is narrowing quite a bit, and I would love to go back to. The beginning of time and see how they determined what our limit was, because I. I questioned where the limit was initially set. This is, I had more time, but look back, but um, in any event. Yes. What that's looking like.
So just sort of, so what you have to do to look at what we consider either. If it's a negative, it's a gap, which you hear Madison talk about, they have this gap to fill. Or for us, since we haven't been over it, the buffer, is you would subtract the lower number from the upper number, so. You know, the three, it's three million four hundred seventeen is what we can levy. And last year, we did three, three, four, six, so the difference there is the buffer that we have. Going into twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
Cameron.
Can you remind me how the blue bar is determined?
I think that's our next slide.
Yep, so every year, um. The Department of Revenue calculates our net new construction. And then that percentage is um, tapped on to our levy limit the year before. So it's, in the middle, it's calculated based on all taxable property, including the tips. Um, so they determine it's, uh, equals value due to new building destruction and land improvements minus changes. Do the like demolition or destruction, which we don't have a lot of that. Seeing all the new, you know, our new subdivisions, that's a lot of growth, so the last. Um, couple of years and then going into the future next couple of years, we should have good growth of at least two to three percent, I'm hoping. And then that number is released August fifteenth, which right at the beginning of what kind of would be.
So how did it go down between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty?
So I think that is related to um, our reevaluation in twenty eighteen, because it kind of legs a year. Um. So that's the only thing I could come up with was, that the new construction was. Affected by our full reevaluation in twenty eighteen.
And I also think that they dropped the value of that B and B building, remember, we settled that lawsuit? So that was substantial. That was.
Top B and B.
Yeah, that building, we taxed it at a certain level. And they challenged it in court. You know, they said it wasn't worth that much, but then we eventually, after probably what, two, three years, I'm guessing. Uh, we settled at a lower level, so they had to go back. And we had a grant. And we had a grant them. So then I'm speculating that because of that, that equalized value went down, right? Because they, they won and it wasn't worth what we said it was worth according to. Yeah, I think that was probably, you have hit that one. That should have hit the most part of that.
Okay. And then the line since twenty twenty has been, I mean, is fairly stagnant? I mean, slightly going up, but I mean, like, we're building houses. We have like three developments. Are they not? The house is not going up quick enough or like, what is keeping that line pretty flat?
Well, think about how this works. It's done by a percentage of your equalized value. So let's say we build ten houses, right? So that's three percent. But now that the next year, those ten houses are now part of our equalized value. So you, to get the same amount, you probably have to build fourteen houses. Right? Because of your percentage is of your, your full. As you increase that number, you need more to get to the same percentage. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah. And again, these are a kind of legs. So like in twenty twenty-one, those are, um, the values of the net new construction equalized value. So then that the two point eight three three percent is what we use in twenty twenty-two for the twenty twenty-three budget. Oh, that's why they're such a leg. So I think that's because now we'll have, you know, a lot of homes being built this year or next year probably. So then we'll have a couple, you know, since there's that leg.
And that's a good example. You can see it's a six million dollar difference. So to get that two point eight percent, you need even more growth. It's, it's kind of a terrible way of doing business, to be honest with you. How the state has it set up. And that's why you hear everybody complaining.
It seems almost impossible to, to
Instead.
As you grow and, but your levy limit won't, you know, because you, you have to be exponentially growing to get the, the, to get the levy limit to go up linearly. Okay.
So I attended a conference Thursday and Friday, um, and one of the things they kind of talked about was, um, you know, now that the state legislatures and the government are aware that municipal funding is a problem, um, you know, they're tackling the shared revenue. And someone asked, well, why don't they change the levy limit laws? And the presenter was like, there's no way that will happen, like essentially like the Republicans and said that they're not in favor of that. And for that, this challenge to be tackled is a much bigger problem. So they kind of took the low hanging fruit of changing the shared revenue. Um, cause like, I think it was a city local, kind of a walkie, walkers on maybe. Um, he commented, he's like, you know, the shared revenue, if it doubles for some communities, that's great. It's like, but shared revenue is only one percent of our revenue. So if you double that, it's like they have a helpless.
Uh.
So a lot of communities don't really, aren't affected by the increase in shared revenue. They wanna see the levy limits. Sounds like that's not coming anytime soon.
And that's the other way of doing it is if you have diff- more revenue coming or you take costs off the levy limit, then that gives you more of a buffer.
Alright, and that's why. Uh, so what I did here, so levy kind of is two numbers added together. It's our debt service plus everything else, which is a lot of, you know, personnel costs and hair services. Um, so this one I kind of took out the debt service and looked at if we just were paying for people and services. Not our debt payments. Um, but our actual levy was, and then if we had, you know, had a policy that said, well, we're only gonna increase by net new construction. What the jumps would be, you could figure, you know, five hundred thousand dollars difference in twenty twenty-two. We had limited our levy growth by a new construction versus the actual increase. I think that's kind of this grid. You know, I guess getting bigger than this is probably the other one to get smaller.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's a good one.
Okay, so the debt payments aren't applied to the levy limit.
Correct.
And so.
So we can borrow a whole bunch of money and then whoever the debt payments are, we can levy for that. They're not limited. Not that I am encouraging.
Interesting. Okay, so this graph. Uh, why, why is the gap wider if you just remove our debt services? Cause I guess if you levy separately for those. I'm, I'm now confused. I'm sorry.
Well, this whole slide just ignores debt service.
Right.
Yeah. So the, the two lines are just saying, this is how much we actually increased our levies for services and personnel versus how much if we had said we were only gonna increase it by the percentage.
Okay.
The, the name of what we actually taxed minus.
Right. Well, you know, what, yeah, but what she's showing here is if we would have a policy that says we're only gonna increase our spending to new construction level, if we would have done it, right? This is what it would have been. So basically, instead of like eighty thousand dollars offering, we have a five hundred thousand because we spent more than the two point eight percent.
We're spending more than what our new construction.
Right. So that's how we're eating it up. So that, this just shows if we hadn't done that, what it would look like.
Okay.
And that's why on that first slide, they're getting closer because then that new construction, we're, we're, we're getting to where you're gonna levy right. Like state is the net new construction is a lot. We're either spending too much or net new construction isn't keeping up with what we're spending.
Right. Okay, that, so this just shows that.
The problem with the levy limit is it's not adjusted for inflation. So that's why we're getting this way is because the cost of doing business is going up.
Right.
But we can only increase by this percentage instead of what inflation, this plus increment. So that's the problem. There's no inflation adjustment in the levy.
Okay.
It's not really that we're spending a lot more. It's just there's no inflation.
No, but that's what it show, but that's what it shows. Our spending is going up more than a new construction.
Right.
And the, 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 the levy limit is only going up by new construction.
Okay, so costs are going up because of inflation, believe. And then, but we aren't building enough houses or quick enough because of the, or, or the levy limit rules aren't accounting for.
Right.
And this is why so many communities across the state are now going to referendums, because
They need money.
They need money, because inflation's outrageous, but they can only fall in a hole.
So I have one more question on this.
Yeah.
So the debt does not apply to the levy. Does that not incentivize us in some ways to take out loans when we can?
Well, no, you still have to pay the loans back. The only difference, it's not going against the levy limit. So you're, you're right. So you can take more mo- borrow more money and not affect your levy limit, but you're, it's you're bringing up the cost of doing business. I mean, the taxpayers still have to pay that.
Yeah.
And there's very little we can do to change this, correct?
Well, I, I don't want to say little. There's always, it's like your budget at home, right? You pick, you prioritize things. You live within your limits. So we could certainly live in, it's more difficult. You gotta pick, make choices.
So one of the presentations of the conference, um, they talked about redoing how you think about budgeting, rather than saying, okay, this year we only have seventy thousand dollars, we can increase our budget. Instead, you need to, he said, it's really hard to get people to think this way. But instead of saying, these are our goals, this is our big picture, you know, what do we want to accomplish next year? And then, okay, how can we do that knowing this is what we You gotta kind of think about it backwards. Not, okay, well, we only have seventy thousand, you know, but we know mowing's going up, whatever it's, well, we know we wanna take care of employees next year. So how can we do that? You know, you gotta kind of rework.
And, and what we have that sitting out there that would be very beneficial is once we're able to close the TID. Will have a huge influx because there's that gap that has been going to pay off the TID that we're gonna end up getting basically twenty-eight percent of that, I think. I have to remember my email. I think twenty-eight percent. So that will bump up a revenue part of it.
In twenty thirty.
Well, no, we, I think, and I'm just, right now, I think we could do it as early as twenty twenty-seven. It closes officially, we have to close it in thirty, uh, twenty thirty-seven. But I think the numbers may, if we're lucky, be there where we could close it in twenty twenty-seven.
We don't pay any new additional ones that come.
Right, and we'll have to pay off the nursing. Cause they went on a, where they get paid for, instead of us giving them a lump sum, they ended up taking the increment and getting paid that every year. So that's all the way to twenty thirty-seven. But I think most places, if they could get their money in twenty twenty-seven, they would take it. So we'd have to rework that, but that's kind of how we sit now. There is at least some light out there for us.
You're saying in twenty twenty-seven, if we closed the TID, it's our share of the tax revenue, the TID would support the debt service that still exists on the TID?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
And that's a fairly significant chunk of debt they had.
It was, I think it's twenty seven thousand per year. It would be two hundred and seventy thousand. Everything else I think is gonna be just all paid off. I think we owe a hundred and forty-six to Sumer yet, and then I think we're besides that. I, I, again, don't pull behind all these. I don't have it in front of me. But when we looked at it in September, that in my head, that was what I was calculating, that there's a possibility, a possibility.
Right, well, yeah, because Xander and Esther money when you're talking, it's falling off the TID, that would have been paid for.
Yes, right, in ten years, yeah.
Alright, uh, and then the next slide, I just kind of forecasted, um, what our limit get or not get, but pushing could be, um, so for next year, I person, you know, if we did another three percent growth, we'd have the seventy two thousand. It went down. So then the next year, if we did the two and a half percent growth, we'd get an additional sixty two thousand. Percent, fifty-one. So like Jay said, you know, the number gets bigger, your percent, you know, it's fine. But it's just, you funnel projections and um, and so, other than a levy limit restriction, we do have other restrictions we have to be able to, um, when we budget. Um, so again, you know, our big thing is how do we prioritize what we pay for? Um, so obviously we, you know, have to provide our rich service to our residents. Um, I think recycling is optional. But since we're in the middle of contracting and, you know, we have an escalator in our contract, so we know that's gonna be budgeted the next several years. Um, I think it's you know, important that we budget to ensure our property and for vehicles and liability insurance. I think that's something we absolutely have to budget for. Um, we provide, you know, retirement for our employees and the percentage is determined by the state. Um, so, you know, we have a say in that. Um, health insurance, we do through the state program. So again, it's just kind of, they tell us this is what your new rates are gonna be. And at the mercy of that, unless we wanna look into, you know, self-insurance or some other options, which at first communities do that, but then they regret it and then they, they feel bad. So I'm not gonna recommend we change health insurance. Um, one obviously we've come up with here in the last year is retire benefits. We've had a lot of staff retire, staff going to retire. Um, so we're gonna have cash payment payouts for vacation, um, their cyclic conversion. So those are, you know, things we obviously have to fund. And then I, you know, throw in the contracted services, like it's mowing, you know, that's the service we can't just blow the grass, not get mowed all year. So either we have to contract it out or buy equipment and have staff do it.
You know, mow the summer.
Mow it somewhere.
The best pound meters round.
Hey, you know, what obviously, plug in, I have staff really is looking into the employee retention improvement as something we would like to see prioritized. You know, we're working on the salary scale and the stuff program. So I'm sort of decided there have, you know, you know, Jay encouraged us to look at new revenue sources, you know, where we can cut some costs. You know, it's a referendum in our future. Hopefully not anytime soon, but hearing more and more, uh, one of the topics at the conference was from a sales company, a communications company where they're like, oh, hire us to do all your marketing for referendums. We have all this experience. We work with this community and this community. So I definitely think we'll be seeing more referendums instead of fewer. Yes, that's kind of all I had on this topic. Pretty morrow.
Are there any questions for Bobby on this? Go ahead, Karen.
Feel like I'm asking questions.
So that's what it's all about. That's what we wanna do. You'll need it in June.
It's a good graphic, though.
That's what we have for supper.
Yeah. Um, so. Alright, fine. No, you're good. Uh, okay, the, the land for the new village hall. We, I'd like to just play it out, cause now I'm wondering. I made a mistake, or we made a mistake. If we had borrowed for that land instead, we bought it just with cash. I mean, the, the, the value of doing that was avoiding the interest breaks. At least that was our whole conversation. Maybe look, we have the cash, we should buy it, have to get it straight. May- maybe that money, that amount was too low to matter, but like play that out for me. Let's say we would have taken a loan for that. There would have been a higher amount we owed over time, but if I'm, I'm looking at the levy limit, one, the orange line would have been down a little bit because we borrowed instead of.
No, cause that, we paid cash from a grant and from extra money from the general fund balance. So it didn't hit the levy at all. That had no effect on our levy, because it wasn't even in the budget.
And we could have chosen to use those funds for something else.
But, but it would be, it would, it would be the same thing.
So it didn't, it didn't hit the levy because we had the general funds there, but you know, we have to borrow, right, for our general funds every year to go up, or is it not general funds?
Which one?
We, we borrowed capital.
Capital, okay. But so we might have had to borrow for a capital project because we didn't have the funds in the general fund for paying for that life. Again, I'm not saying, I'm just trying to take one example so I can try to piece it all together, obviously relates to what you can stop. I'm not picking on that decision.
No, 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 I'm not only that. I'm just making sure you understand that that would not have had an effect on them.
Yes.
You're right. We could have maybe bought a squad car or something. So, so the difference would be you're paying debt service for the squad car. Or, you know, right now we did squad car. We paid cash for that. If you flipped it around, then you could buy the squad car. We'd be paying debt on land, but not the squad car. So it, it, it's not generally one-time purchases generally are not the thing that hurts the levy limit. It's the ongoing cost and then the steady, like she said, the inflation. That's what really hits you. You can usually suck it up for a year, but it's the ongoing cost that we building. And then for us, it's salary that's the number one. That's the biggest cost for most governments.
And then businesses.
Yeah, yeah. So that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Nicely done, Bobby. Thank you. Alright. Last item, discussion and possible action regarding the request, the proposal for professional service for repair, renovation or replacement of the cross plane school.
I'm back with this. Uh, I know I brought this up, but I think we're on here too now in regards to a capital plan. Since that, uh, that day we came up with a plan for a full feasibility group together. Uh, that group has been meeting monthly. I think we missed one more, uh, February, but we had them at monthly. Um, had a good, uh, had that great discussion. We also had a survey with the community and division section. Um had a good, uh had that great discussion, we also had a survey with the community and division section. And the group in general uh feels that we are at a kind of a s- stop point, behind a stop point, and in regards to next step. The goal here would be to get a firm, um get a consultant to come in and then provide us first with phase one, step one. Uh give us an updated in regards to our current, so. Let us know if things within our current facility that need to be fixed and or the cost to fix all those things. Along with um what would the cost to to build it somewhere, I'm sorry, that's that's step two. Uh so step one would be for them to come in, do a current facility study, uh to provide us with. More or less an ADA study where we don't meet, um the ADA regulations that are in place, which there'll be quite a few of those. And also, uh what what did our current facility look like, what look like and compare some other fifty different facilities. Um and are the things that we do in current facility, give us a cost estimate, those sorts of things, what we can do with our current facility. If at that point, uh we feel that we need another. So are another way to look at things or another placement for such, uh since that came up within our survey analysis. Uh at that point, they were gonna give us uh the cost estimates for the new facility, so we have this word footage that we feel that we may need. Uh based on the services being in uh the nineties, what the community are discussing, they've been in a survey. And now we're just looking for, you know, a process committee comparison to a new facility, uh into our current facility. The committee, the pool feasibility committee, along with the Parks and Recreation Committee, um discussed this and both thought it was the next step that we needed to go. Um then we talked about this money coming out of the pool improvement fund, uh not to exceed the twenty five thousand. Um once phase one, step one and phase one, step two are completed. We would then be in future negotiations with the consultant and or engineer to come up with plans uh for them until they're real expensive. Uh which I would have been able to need or we wouldn't build to until we knew exactly what was, without the cost. And the decision to.
Comments? Questions?
Well, as being on the Parks and Rec Committee or being the chair of the Parks and Rec and assisting Mike with doing the like work for. Finding out what it's gonna take, getting a pool, we are pretty much at an impasse of as far as we can go as a committee. The pool feasibility and Parks and Rec. You know, like, we don't have a number where we can take it to the village board or to a tax payer, you know, we're kind of in the dark, we don't know what it's gonna cost. You know, we can look at some of the similar costs from a couple of years ago from other pools, but we do not have a number. We will not get to a number. Until we basically hire a consultant. So, I mean, I've I've been getting a lot of heat from the community about it, cause they found out that I'm there and they're asking me, hey, when's this happening? Whoa, we're in the day and steps right now. Um Sarah was on the committee with me. And we put a lot of work, a lot of effort in, surveyed the community, had vision sessions. Trying to feel out what the community wants, but I'm not an engineer, like Sarah's an engineer. I don't know what it takes for a concrete, I don't know what it takes to put it was able to make a pool. So we're basically at the point where. We need to either pay a consultant or just put this back to bed, and I don't wanna put it back to bed, and we got a lot of work and time involved in it, so. I know it's a, you know, not to exceed twenty five thousand is kind of a scary number, but. Basically, to put that.
I guess I'm gonna have a couple of comments. One, I appreciate all the work that's been done. I guess what I would like to see, I know you've done the community input. You've done the surveys, uh I know you've done a usage or needs, talk with stakeholders and it. But none of that has been written up and brought back to the board. And I think it would be important for us to see what the community is asking for, so if. If, let me finish everything before you get too excited, but I think we need to have a summary of what was presented or feedback given at. The community meetings. I would like to see the results of the sur- survey, including comments and everything. I would like to see what you've come up with the usage of of the pool and then the pros and cons. That you guys went through to pick the two spots for the the pool, cause I've heard them. You know, some people have said that, you know, said, well, we want it at the new place, cause then we can keep this pool open until that gets built. So I I would like to see something in writing on the pros and cons of of the sites. Now, I am totally in favor of uh step one. Phase one, step one, I do believe the next step, to answer your question after you have all that, is to figure out. If it's possible and what the cost would be to fix the current pool, because that's the number one question I'm getting. Why are we building a new pool instead of fixing the old pool? I don't have an answer for people, so I think that's where we need expertise. Uh I think we need someone to go in, and I would expand it a little more than ADA, I would take a look at. The money that we did for this building on looking at the problems, how they broke down every section from electrical. The plumbing to whatever, whatever, I think we need to do that and then a cost. Because I think to me, as board member, before I pick which site, I need to know. What it would cost to to repair the old pool. I mean, that is gonna be one of the first decisions we make, do we repair or do we build new? I think if you've gone through and it sounds like you've gone through the steps of the pros and cons for each site, I would like to see that. I don't think any of us have seen that, so I would ask that your committee puts together a report on what you've. Found, so we have something to base it on. I am certainly uh supportive of phase one, step one. Getting the technical evaluation of the existing facility, to me, that is the next step for for this process. And again, if you wanna put in some of the other stuff, but some of this, like review present and future population projections. And current usage data, I think we can do that, I don't think you need to pay someone a hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars an hour. To call you up and say, what is your population, what is your usage, you know, of it, so I think. I think we can streamline some of this and uh the the last point. I'm a little concerned that we are now gonna use the same group that does this. To do the engineering and everything, I think that should be a separate bid process. So other companies can get in on the engineering, it really reduces our ability to negotiate. If in this agreement, we are gonna negotiate just with them on the engineering of it. So I I would eliminate that, and if that's a separate thing, I don't see why we wanna limit ourselves to one company. They might have the whole bid anyway, since they've done some of the preliminary work and know what about project. But to say that we're gonna negotiate just with that company, I'm not even sure that's legal. Because I'm pretty sure this is gonna be more than twenty five thousand, you gotta send it out a bit. Especially engineering, and on that, I would hope we would have the decision made on what site we want. I think it's a total waste of taxpayers' money to spend an incredible amount of money to do engineering on two sites. Knowing we're only building one pool. I think we need to the.
Step one would decide with the location, is it, is it better, is it cheaper to do it? At the current facility?
But it's under here two sites.
Yeah.
But that's where I'm, huh?
You're saying for, well.
Yeah, I'm saying we should decide, I don't wanna spend the money on two sites knowing.
No, no, they're not gonna do engineering on both sides. Engineering will only be done after step one and step two are completed. There's not gonna, we're not gonna have any plans or anything, the only thing that would, they would provide a concept on him. Though they're not, that's not, they're not gonna be doing engineering.
But why would we even wanna spend the money on that? We should make that decision, right?
I can let me know if I'm saying wrong, but I think when we were looking at feedback, one thing that we realized was that. When people were giving their opinion on which site, they didn't really have all of the information necessary to even make that decision.
Okay.
Because while you might have people saying things like, they like where it is now because it's convenient, they're not thinking about. What's the size that we need, like how much land do we need, how much space do we need for a parking lot? So all these people are giving this opinion without that information. And then another thing was talking about if it was over, you know, over in the in the new site. You know, some of the concerns they had would hopefully be addressed by a professional, like, you know, they're talking about like safety and crossing the street. Or like the exits and all of those things, so we just felt like it was really difficult for just a. Uh not of someone who's not in that business to even make a decision on which site would make more sense, so we really felt. That while we got a lot of feedback from the community. Nobody really can make, we needed more information from a professional as to which space could make more sense. Or that I guess to give us more pros and cons for each of the spaces.
And there were, there were like when they said like location, what would fit before, like I don't think people cared where, it was just. We need to do something with a pool.
Well, not here, well, well, that's my, that's the information I would like to hear, because if it's really to get a pool. I I clearly think the first thing we should do is what's the cost of repairing the current pool?
Yeah, right, and that's what we're trying to find.
I agree, and that I'm I'm with you on, but that's on, I I would stop it at at that point. Uh you know, to do two traffic.
You need the delta.
Do what?
To make the decision, you need the cost to fix the old versus the cost of the new, you can't just look at one and say, well, we're never gonna build a new. Yeah, it's the difference, that's that's.
But 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 what I'm looking at, I'm 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 even for that, the question is, is the pool fixable? That's, that, I mean, I mean, there's some steps here that we. No, yeah, I'm.
Current conditions report is, they're gonna go through reg, chemical, electrical.
And I'm all for that, I think that's where we are.
And that is step one.
Right.
I have the second part in there, mainly, I mean, if you wanna stick that out.
Well, that I I can't.
Back out to them for it afterwards, cause how are we gonna make a decision?
No, and I understand, but. It's hard for me to give, to do phase one, step two without seeing the information that you've received. I I'm not sure your five points are all the points that we need. There may be more points, less points, I don't really know. On it, I don't need an expert to tell me how the traffic pattern, we know Evergreen, there's one spot. The best they can do is make a parking lot exit to military. The current pool has four exit spots, right, it's in the middle of a block, I mean, I don't need someone to tell me to pay someone that. So some, I I guess what I'm saying is. There's too much in here that I'm not comfortable with. To okay that, I think there's information for me to be comfortable in moving forward, I would like to see. A report on what information you've collected from your group in the community, and I agree that we need to evaluate. The current pool on what needs, if it can be fixable and and what the costs are and what the problem. I, that's just my opinion on that, so I would end it at that, and I worry about saying in there that we will negotiate. With the one company, I just don't think that's a good.
Yeah, and that was more, I I talked to a few of these, cause honestly, I wasn't so sure how to write the proposal. In regards to final steps, right, because if they're doing concepts, most of, I'll just say, most of the time. I can't remember who we had do this building, but they did the same thing. For the current conditions report and or compliance, that's pretty cheap. But it's all cheap because they want that final. It is, it's.
But they never got it for this, right, and we're certainly gonna revisit it out.
Right, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that's what they normally do. Uh and what I, what they had said is a lot of times it's a percentage of the cost, the overall cost, you know, I wasn't okay with that. So I was saying like the next time you would negotiate that, and I don't, we can take that out as well, we just wanna do step one.
Uh that's what I would be covering, and that's what, you know, Maisel is investing a hundred eighty four thousand into their updated, because they were having problems. So I just think, like I say, I'm comfortable with moving phase one, step one. I think that's a logical move, after that, I just think it's a little premature. That's, that's just my opinion.
I would just add that I really hope to see this project keep moving because I moved here, what, six years ago? Was told, oh yeah, I'm having a pool in about six years or so, and we have not even talked about it. I was told by board members that, not like it wasn't a first cure, but the fact that really no movement has been made. Was a little, like, that's where I'm like, I wanna see the movement made, you know.
I think that's the history of Cross Plains, the well we're building now, the study and everything. The study and everything was done in the late nineties, Village Hall, we spent thousands and thousands of dollars to do this. For Village Hall, it's twenty twenty three and we haven't done it, that's my whole thing, that the timing. If we're gonna do that, and I have not seen the the timing of this, and that's what also gets me. Why spend a whole lot of money if we don't, I don't know when we're looking to build this. We have decided as a board that this is number two in our capital projects, after uh Village Hall and Police Station. The pool is definitely, both staff and the board has approved that, so I think it's gonna be moving forward. Is it gonna be built next year? I wouldn't be in favor of that, we're looking to build in twenty five, but after that, I certainly think it could be. We're looking to help if the CDA, if we can use the same funding mechanism for this, we will, we're. We're still at at the early stages of learning how to use, get federal money for this kinda stuff. So I'm just, what I'm trying to say is, I wanna move this forward. But I don't wanna spend a whole lot of money, then it sits for three, four years and we have to redo it. So I'm all for, but I would like to see the work you guys have done in a report. To the board, and I again, I agree with you a hundred percent, step, phase one, step one is logically the next step for us.
I mean, I'm not gonna go hurt you here, but I'm just kinda curious as to why you wanna see the work you sent us out on a subcommittee for. That you put in our hands that we've done with Parks and Rec, we did a pool feasibility committee, I don't.
Cause it's gonna go back to what we just discussed on transparency, so the rest of the community, you had thirty five people that you're. Your input, right, how many survey results did you have? I think the community would like to see the result of that. I think the board would like to see the results of that, I would like to see the pros and cons. And I think the community would like to see the pros and cons of the two sites, it's a matter of keeping the community. Informed on that, so it's not a punishment, it's just something that we should be sharing, right? Cameron?
Did you guys cover the pros and cons and the survey results and stuff in the open meetings already, like is it?
We went over the survey results, there's now a report, though.
Okay, but but I mean, I I, yes, you know, transparency is is better between committees and stuff. But like this would be a little weird because most committees, you know, you don't see the whole process or the pros and cons. Or all of that stuff, you know, it gets to us as Public Safety Committee, you know, recommends the following or whatever. And I think the own, well, okay, uh example, choosing the Village Center, right, planning committee. Well, actually, I don't even know the planning committee, but there was, there was discussions and like a pro con list, but like, you know, what ultimately got to the board. Was just like a one little pager that just said like, you know, like pros and cons of brewery road, pros and cons of whatever, so I know there was more information there, but it like wasn't in.
I think that with that for the pool, it doesn't have to be a detailed. Technical thing, but I'd like to see pro, simple pros and cons, I I know one of them is you can keep the pool open and everybody going if you build on another site. That's a pro for for the, you know, on on why there, I don't know what else, if I would imagine.
I have a PowerPoint that I'll bring to the board.
Okay.
Can we, should we approve phase one?
But I I I want what other people are feeling, I I just want, that that was my feeling on it. Cameron?
The the other, well. I guess I don't necessarily fully agree with you on just phase one, step one, because again, I think. You know, that that doesn't look like it includes. Even, you know, I understand, I do agree with you that there's some stuff that maybe we, you know, we wouldn't need to do in the phase two stuff like the traffic patterns and stuff, but like. You know, I was considering. You know, I was considering tearing my house down to the studs and rebuilding it. I would wanna know what the cost of the new house would be to make that decision instead of just getting a quote on the first piece without, you know, so like, and again, I I just don't see anything in. The bullet list of uh, phase one, step one, that would include the costs for the new thing. So I think that's something, you know. For sure add into doing that stuff.
Well, I I I I should agree, it's just that I'm not sure we're there because I'm not real clear. If we're building a new, when we were talking about to do do new location. Were we looking if it was staying at the same one, we would bulldoze every, you know, the building down and pull up the pool? And just start from scratch? Or are we keeping the pool house and redoing? I I don't, I don't know what the discussions were, so I, I, there's a lot of that unknown that I'm not sure what we're talking about when you say. The current site, what that means.
You couldn't really have those discussions at the meetings though, cause we don't know a dollar amount, like. This is what we're trying to get is we need to see how much it's gonna cost. If this company comes in and says it's gonna be. One point five million dollars to renovate the existing vessel to get us by for fifteen years. Is that something that we can consider? Absolutely. But they say we gotta bulldoze it, rebuild, it's gonna be eight million dollars. Well, that's a lot of money. I go, we can build it over here for eight and a half, but. Right, but I don't have any of the meat and potatoes to really go with them.
But when you say current site, I don't know what that actually means. If you're talking about bulldozing everything or keeping part of it. I I I I don't know what that, when you say current site, what that means. I know exactly where you're talking about. On the other side, that would be brand new, right? We'd be running everything new. But I'm, when you said current site, I'm not sure what that meant.
We don't know what that means either, though, yeah. Yeah, we don't know, we don't know, is, we don't know if they'd have to literally tear everything out and start over. Or if it would be more cost effective just to keep the vessel or keep the building the way it is and you pull everything out and add new.
I could help if I knew what you came up with, if, for example, the swim team said, we really would like an eight lane pool. Versus a six lane, so we could host conference. Well, then I would know we'd have to build a new vessel because ours is only six and we'd have.
Would you have to build a whole new vessel or just add two lanes? That's the whole.
But but what I'm trying to say is I I, I don't have any, I'm with you, I'm more lost than you are because I don't know what the stakeholders have asked for.
The community wants a functioning pool that's not gonna go down every now and again. It's what that came down to. Um, obviously, everyone would like like a big new shiny pool, but we need to find out. Which is better as stewards of the taxpayer, we need to find out which option works better. Yes, we have land at Bear Park, but it it can be done. At the existing site and just fixed. There, we're okay that the majority of the survey was sixty, it was less than sixty forty for location. I think it's more so the village just wants to see motion on it. And I think we've had the meetings, we've done the light work.
Right, so I, so then I think what, what you've just said, I think the next step is clearly to get what the cost was to fix it. Right?
Right, if that's in this proposal.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and I support that. I, the rest of it, like I said. I'm at step, phase one, step one, no problem, agreed a hundred percent. If you wanna throw something else in it. It's the other parts of it that I'm have concerns.
So, alright, let me play this out. So we uh, we go up on RFP. We get, we we pick a consultant to do step one, phase one, step one.
Yeah.
They give us the information, it's gonna cost us four million dollars to rent it. And and that's with tearing everything out and building something new on site. Actually.
No, I would.
I'm just, I'm just throwing solidly hypothetically. Then we go back out from RFP.
No, see, you you guys, my my first step would be the RFP would be step one. Please look at our pool, tell us what the problems with the pool are and what needs to be replaced to bring it up to a quality pool. End of it, just stop right there. So that comes back to us at this. We then look at it, okay. This is how much it's gonna cost to bring the current pool up to whatever we need to do. Now let's compare that to what the public wants in usage and added. Can, are there enough there to say, hey? Let's take a look at actually replacing the pool because we'll get two more lanes, we'll get zero depth. Pool, we'll get blah, 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 whatever it is, and then we move forward on that. That's where the decision making comes, yes. That's how I, that's how I see it.
So you're saying just going in and kinda revamping our current vessel the way it is, every, the bathhouse the way it is, everything, that's what they would be doing? That's what the study would be?
Yes, but if you say ADA, I don't know if that means our toilet stalls are too small and they have to put in a new toilet. I mean, whatever that is, I. I I don't know, but that's what I want the experts to say.
Have you seen the facility?
I, trust me, I spent twenty years and I had three boys swim on swim team, yeah, twenty years, yeah.
Those of us are pretty familiar with the current state, you know, very confident that they are going to say. You need to rebuild.
Okay, that would be great.
So that's why I think we're like. We need, but to show taxpayers, we do need, I think, a professional to say. You need to rebuild. But I think because we feel so confident, I mean, the the bathhouse alone is.
Yeah, I'm not debating the quality of it, but I have to be, we have to be able to say to taxpayers, we brought this in. This is what we would have to do to bring it up to snuff. We don't feel this is well spent money. We're looking at these two sites, here are your price tags.
Right, and I think that's why we felt very confident moving forward because it's at such a state of discomfort there.
Well, I wanna move forward too. It's just, I'm not moving as forward as you. I'm more believing baby steps in building. The reasoning behind it so you get people behind you. That's, and I, we're talking about what? A difference of maybe sixty days? If I look at your timeline, that's a pretty tight timeline. For, well, I'm looking at it here.
Think part of the timeline too is trying to get in there before there's water in it.
Yeah, no, I I I'm not disagreeing with the, I'm just saying it's very tight. Wasn't it like within thirty days or something?
Thirty days or?
What? No, 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 no.
Submission day? Yeah, that's the issue date, so I would have that up tomorrow. And then the due date for the.
What what page is it on? Tell me the numbers that are on.
It's one hundred and nineteen.
One nineteen.
That's.
Okay. No, 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 no. This is what it's saying. So you're issuing it tomorrow. The due date is the twelve, so that gives them about three weeks. That goes to committee within three days, and then it comes back to us in the twenty-second. So they have less than thirty days to pull everything together.
To give us a proposal on how much that would cost.
Right.
The one step, one step two.
Right, right, but one of my questions as well.
Because of the time, because of timing, I mean, how much time they need to put that up for.
Oh, I, I, oh, I just see it's really. Oh, okay, well then, then then I'm comfortable with that if they can come up with it that quickly.
Well, I've already received one.
So this is the RFP to hire.
I understand what it, what it is, but generally when someone writes an RFP, they try to figure out what their. Costs are gonna be, so they kinda wanna know what is involved in it. I mean, they're putting out a bit, basically, you're asking them to give you a a a price.
These companies do this every day.
Okay. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not an expert.
Studies are all very. I mean.
Uh, like I said.
Confident that we'll get proposals.
Okay.
I know we'll get at least two.
Hey Mike, I, if you could help clarify, this is the one. Piece of this puzzle that I'm not quite understanding. If we're gonna look at phase one and then we're gonna get a cost estimate for repairing or. Fixing the existing pool. Why aren't we at the same time not including pieces from that step two about. Present and future population projections and current usage data into this equation. If we're gonna fix the pool. But the pool's inadequate to the current needs of the community, much less the needs of the community in fifteen and twenty years. Shouldn't we be thinking about that now? Instead of like if that, if this pool isn't gonna fit the community's needs now. Even if we fix it, then isn't that a real crucial component of a decision that should be upfront? And thought of immediately instead of push down the road to a later point?
Okay, can I, I, cause I brought that up. We should be able to get that data ourselves, right? And we're talking about sixty days. Right? We're talking about within sixty days, it, less than thirty days, we'll have an idea, right? I mean, we can pull a u- usage, I already know, last year we had a hundred and sixty resident membership. And then we had what, fifty-five daycare passes? And I mean, it's, I don't need to pay someone four hundred and fifty. Dollars an hour to pull that.
Pulling them, we did the survey already, like, that's what we're giving them. We're giving them that information. But they need that information to make it this, help us make a decision on the size. On the scope of the project. They need, that's, that's what makes that, right? Like, on top of. How much is it going to cost? You know, that's.
Right. Oh, that's even better, so I.
We have all that information. I'm not looking for them to get that information. I'm looking at them to use what we already have. And our comp plan has it, our park maintenance base plan has it. I'm not, that, that's just saying, that's what they would use. For step two.
I I'm reading the same way Brian is. That that's what we're asking.
Determine space needs in footprint for new facility.
No, no, the the.
Like, does it say review present and future? Doesn't say like generate.
Review, oh, okay. Okay.
So maybe it would be, help determine the space needs and and then like a sub-bullet of that would be like, you know, they're gonna use that, the data that would provide them to help. Do that one, I, you know, I don't know, maybe it's just. Wish, I mean, if we just revamp or if we just revamp our current facility. That information, it is eat and help them make a decision, but. There's nothing they can do, we're just revamping that facility, that, nothing can change, right?
Is there somewhere in there that says how long you're revamping it's not? I mean, we get forty or fifty years of use.
What'd you do, what'd you do the last one, zero two thousand?
Two thousand one?
Remodel?
Yeah.
Uh, no. Probably ninety-eight, ninety-nine, I think.
Do you remember how much that cost?
We're noted. Well, I just, no, no, I I agree, but I mean, like I say, I, again, I'm just speaking mine that I think we should, that should be the next step.
So, so then I would do the RFP this for step, phase one, step one.
I would.
Get that information, bring that back to the board.
With the information, the other information.
Yeah.
The girl already got this, I'm like, oh.
Oh, yeah, the survey information.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I, yeah, I'm gonna back that back in there. Uh, so then let's say that takes someone, right, it's in June, so then. What what is gonna make it so that, so that, are we gonna have benchmarks? What's gonna make us go back out for step, phase one, step two?
Well, I personally think the number one thing is the timing. Right, I mean, are we, if if we see that we can't afford to build this until twenty twenty-six. Do we do it now or do we wait till twenty twenty-five to get all this information? Cause I think this information will be stale and we'll be redoing it again. So I think a key part missing, and that's what I said, the whole timeline of what your group is thinking of construction.
I think the only thing that we would have to revamp is in the process. Right, they're not gonna have to revamp the concept. We have that, like unless.
I don't know, it'd be a new board and.
You go back, well. The problem is if we don't have something to base information off of as we move forward. And the board still wanna make a decision on the concept or where we go next. We're continuing to have the same conversations. I mean, I've literally had this conversation. For, since what, twenty, two thousand fifteen?
Now, I, well, I, I think I would want it under phase one, step one to be exactly what it is and also a new pool at that site. I think that would be helpful information. One that's ADA compliant, one that is, even with the current footprint with the six lanes, it really would have vanished, but I'd like to see that difference at very low, it could cost more. But fix it, right?
Yeah.
Versus building a new, I don't, I, I think whenever you're a new site, it usually costs less, because we don't have all of that work in our program. I'm sorry. I think that would be helpful for me if that could come.
But the demo work's gonna be done one way or the other. We can't leave a pool. No matter where we go, that's gonna be.
Yeah, you can have this idea of taking your house down with the building. I would like to see if it can be done and if it is uh, done in a way that lasts thirty or forty years. Versus a new one, I, I think those are two numbers that are very close. I think it would be helpful for me in the decision making. I think it'd be helpful for Parks and Rec people.
But then wouldn't you also want the us, uh, new set?
I'm trying to make it quicker and easier, but. It'll probably be the first. If the, at the new site, we could have bigger amenities, I would think. I mean, there is a shelter option, a lot for a couple extra rooms. I'm not saying I want it to stay there either, I'm just saying, I think, this is giving us one data point, we're giving us two. Okay, that's how the fifty-five year old, older than me, that's sitting. Right, and then if you fix it all, but all of these things, oh, let's do this whole, with the same people. Those are two data points down that I think we would get. And then you can say, hey, the whole, pretty expensive, but we want to. Maybe there's additional funding to run the sources on.
Cameron.
I I like what you said, I just, I still can't think of any world where we. Would be able to make a decision without seeing kind of the options. Like, I just don't see where we could get option one and then be like, well, do we wanna go get option two? Like, I think, no matter how we're gonna make a decision here, we're gonna wanna see. Um, you know, fixing the current, replacing the current and or building. And like, I mean, I don't think we're gonna make any effective decision unless we can kinda look at some ballpark numbers for all three of those.
You're gonna live in there. Would be what I would say.
Yeah.
And I, I just wanted to add that also, part of it is we want to get a picture out there too, because there are some people who would like to start some fundraising efforts. And really, none of that can happen until we never. Yeah, completely.
But again, everybody's missing, I'd like to know what the timeline. Yeah, I'd like to know when you think this project will go into design and construction.
Well, that'd be a real poor decision, based on what it's gonna cost. Well, I mean, if you, if you were given five million dollars and you know what's gonna cost you to fix. You're probably gonna do it. You're gonna do it tomorrow if they're gonna do it money. Right?
Say that again?
If you have a donation of five million, but you don't know when that donation is gonna come, that will change your timeline.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I mean, it's. So how could we, how could we sit here and just wait with no plan until we are able to fund it? And if you're more or less telling us like, you can guarantee that this project doesn't happen until twenty twenty seven?
Twenty-six, well, it's not me guaranteeing anything.
Well, you're asking the question.
Well, staff and board, staff and board has put the police station.
Yeah, so.
As as number one, right? We have in our SIP that we're doing design and architectural work next year, construction in twenty-five. I mean, that's a timeline now. Can it change? Sure. I personally don't think the pool should bump this and I would fight very strongly against that. So to me, we can't do both at the same time. That's just too much to to handle. So I would be looking at twenty twenty-six as the earliest that we would be able to do instruction.
But I think you're missing something here. Yes, if you're coming back to renovation for a million dollars, you might be able to do it next year.
That's, that's true, I'm not gonna.
I don't, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say, what's the timeline? And and you're right, and that's why we need the information.
Yeah.
But even Michael.
Even if you start to go with the CDA with the building and if this qualifies for CDA funding and we get both projects under forty-year mortgages, they both could happen at the same time. I think the.
My goals is a strongness. Absolutely. It's, I, you don't know how much work is in, it it will scale. Staff time and our time. It's very difficult to build a building. And then also build a pool at the same time. I can't imagine trying to juggle all that. How are you gonna keep things straight? It's, as someone who built a police station. I'm telling you, and I was, I was just the representative from the police station. I'm not, was it the general contract? It was eleven years, I mean, eleven months of ten hours a day plus weekends, make sure that building was right. And I still screwed up a few. It's very difficult and you still gotta run day to day operation. No, I, I think we have to be, just like in your home, you you pick things in an order. You don't redo your kitchen and your bathroom and replace windows all in the same week. It's nuts. You've got to spread things out and. According to what we've heard, the paperwork, there's a lot of paperwork. And. And again, to expect our administrator to run day to day plus handle two major projects. At the same time, I think is unreasonable. We shouldn't even be talking about that.
I think you got it, didn't you?
Well, I was doing kitchens and bathroom projects simultaneously, but yeah, that's a little different.
So where are we at?
I think. Uh, I'm really stuck here because. I mean, the only thing that is changing there, I guess the thing is you could, you go up for proposals with what was requested. You get the amounts of what those are and you could be like, I don't feel comfortable spending X amount on a base two. We could make it in, I could make the. I could make an action then, so they're each separate, they have to give us separate, I'll have each one. And then you can reject one or V one right away and go back to the board, it's going back to the board either way.
Right, I I'm comfortable with that as long as you eliminate the language that they're automatically negotiated with. You know, I, I don't think that's legal, I'm not an attorney, but I'm pretty sure that anything over twenty five, you gotta go up there. And you can't promise someone that.
Yeah.
So I would eliminate that, and if you wanna split the two, I'm comfortable with that then. That, that's probably a good way of doing it.
There.
Are they practicing or just testing to make sure they work before they go off? Usually that's what you do.
Like every day is or?
Yeah, when you go out on shift, you test it to make sure it works, then you sort of character you.
But can we make a motion and we're just removing? What, like slight modification? And uh, how do we word the?
Motion, I mean, the motion would be to accept. The notice of proposal breaking out. Phase one, step one and phase one. Step two, eliminating the language for phase two.
What do you mean break? What do you mean breaking?
They're doing, he's gonna get two bids. One bid will be for phase one, step one. The next bid will be for phase one, step two, and then we're eliminating three. So when it comes to us.
So give us one, so just give us a proposal for doing one and a proposal for doing two. And then we can decide if we wanna do. Just one. Or you can decide.
Right. So it's not all one, it's that does one bid or step one and two. So what we could do is have a letter discussion.
Which actually, I believe my proposal, the, how they have to do their fees, it does have to be broken out already. I just have to add a clause stating that we can refuse any of the. Or any of the proposals.
Yeah. Alright, so that was the motion. Do I have a second? I'm sorry, can you repeat the motion? Motion is to send out an RFP. Under the notice of proposals. Separating phase one, step one and phase one, step two and the removal of phase two.
I will start.
Alright, discussion?
Bobby, Sarah, or Mike have any, any major issues with that?
Like you were talking about how you break it out for sure, it says provide a schedule for each phase of activities provided by the consulting planning that. And step, so step one.
I'll please.
The two phases, you have a saying, that is real, I'm just real.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of all the same. Don't move. Alright. Future agenda item.
I got one.
Alright.
I'm the only person who looks at it. This one is like, it's not an urgent one or anything like that, and maybe you're already planning and doing it, but Bobby's wonderful, fantastic. Uh, presentation on budgets, uh, do we have one on the tip today? Or tip today in general or?
We could, we could add that, uh, the next one is. On base budget, so I think we could probably do, we could do something, yeah, cause the tip, we don't have to worry about until September.
My, my request does not have to be like, I'm not saying on the next agenda we need to. It's a lesser urgent one, but I do, I know like enough to get in trouble with it and like even. You and Michael kind of went off on the side and had like, what looked, sounded like a really great conversation. I could not follow any of it. I did not know what's happening, so. Um, I need, I need some lessons.
Yeah, no, we can do that, um. Just, you know, next week is base budget, cause I want that done in May because we'll have, I have to do the memo in July if we're gonna do that. So we gotta kind of stay on, focus on. And I, I, we have one more after base budget or is that our last one? That we came up with. Well, anyways, the next one's base budget, but we'll certainly.
Okay, I would, I would tell you if it was an urgent request, it's one case now.
Yeah, yeah, so there's nothing to do with it, it's different. No. Anything, anybody else, anything else? Motion to adjourn, sorry. Alright, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all full of say, alright. Long, easy, but good one.